American Muslims and non-Muslims of having a better future for our kids, of living in peace and harmony within our communities, of contributing to the communities that we live in, giving back and giving the right message to the people around us. Today, this meeting has been arranged, co-organized, hosted by myself, my committee members and Women Physician of UPNA. I want to acknowledge all the speakers that have come today and our moderator, Mr. Anwar Iqbal, who is the bureau chief of Dawn. So the way we are going to conduct the meeting today is that we will have Mr. Iqbal take the podium now. And after Sarvath has spoken, she is the UPNA president, then Anwar will come and take the podium and he will conduct the meeting. It's a town hall meeting, which means that we want it to be an interactive meeting, but we'll have all the speakers speak first. They each will have different topic that they will touch upon in relation to what's happening with Muslims at large in North America, especially Pakistani-American Muslims in America and Canada. And after the speakers have spoken, then we will open the forum for questions and answers. And I will be reminding everybody before we take the questions and answers how the question and answers will be conducted. I would like you to please remember that this is a meeting which is meant for constructive and positive moving forward. It is not meant to be a negative or a meeting in which we are here to tear each other apart. So having said that, I want to welcome everybody and I'm going to have Sarvath come forward. Before I go, I will be remiss if I don't acknowledge Mrs. Ghazala Khan, who's our special chief guest today. She does not need an introduction from the way you were received. Mrs. Khan, we love you, we respect you, and we hope for the best for your family. Now Sarvath Iqbal.
Good afternoon, everyone. Being in the position of UPNA president, it is my great privilege to welcome all of you here today for a special meeting between both of the HOPE Committee and the UPNA. And I like to welcome you from the core of my heart. And we have a very nice lady, Ghazala Khan. We are very proud of you and we really want to acknowledge you that Allah has given you this opportunity, that you have the courage to talk about what you feel. Now, little bit about UPNA. UPNA is a women physician of UPNA. Our mission is to empower the women who are oppressed and underprivileged by educating them and by making them self-sufficient so they can contribute to the society in an honorable way and live with dignity and with respect. So these are the challenging days for us and we don't realize it, but we have to do something about it. And these speakers are, we have wonderful speakers who are going to tell you what's going on. And we will have a session when we will have discussions. Please ask questions and only one minute for one question. Do not speak long time because everybody should get a chance to talk about it. So this challenge that they are going to talk about, we are going to take that challenge with fortitude and we are going to remain connected with the wonderful communities that we are in. So we can, our voices can remain in the beautiful chorus of the, okay, okay, beautiful chorus of the, which is called the American Experience. So welcome you all again.
Now the esteemed Mr. Anwar Iqbal, the bureau chief of Dawn Newspaper in DC.
Assalamualaikum. Sorry we starting late. We wanted to do it on time, but there were certain problems that have been resolved now. And we want to keep it bilingual. Those who want to speak English, they are welcome to speak English and those who want to speak Urdu, they can do so. And those who want to use both the languages, they are okay as well. And the program was that we were sort of going to invite the speakers and they were going to copy their speeches. And then we wanted to ask Ghazala Khan to come and share her views with us, but we heard that she is not well and she would like to return to her room as soon as she can. So I would invite her to be the first speaker. I would like to say a few words in Urdu so that sort of... बहुत आसान होता है बातें करना। मैं तो कम ये इसी चीज़ की मुझे पैसे मिलते हैं। अब खड़े हो जाएं, किसी भी माध्यम पे बोल लें, लिख लें, लेकिन कुर्बानी देनी बहुत मुश्किल काम होता है। और फिर अपनी औलाद की कुर्बानी देनी। हम सब वालदायन हैं। मुझे खुद अपना पता है कि मेरे बच्चे अगर थोड़ी देर के लिए इधर-उधर हो जाए, तो मैं कितना परेशान हो जाता हूं। और किसी का एक मुल्क के लिए अपना जान दे, अपनी जान दे देना, इस बात की अल्टीमेट शहादत है कि उस फैमिली को, उन लोगों को जो यहां रह रहे हैं, उनको इस मुल्क से इतनी ही मोहब्बत है, इतनी ही कुर्बत है जितनी किसी और को हो सकती है। कैप्टन हुमायू खान जैसे लोगों की शहादत की वजह से हम यहां रहने वाले अमरीकी मुसलमान फक्र से अपना सर बलन करके कह सकते हैं कि हम भी इतने ही अमरीकी हैं जितना कोई और। उनकी कुर्बानी ने, उनके खून ने हमें इस काबिल बनाया कि हम खड़े होकर उन इल्जामात की तरदीद कर सकें जो हम पे लगाया जाते हैं। हम मुसलमान हैं, जरूर हैं। हमें फक्र है, लेकिन हम में से कोई दहशतगर्द नहीं। दहशतगर्दों ने जितना हमें नुकसान पहुंचाया है, उतना किसी और को नुकसान नहीं पहुंचाया। Pakistan के साढ़े 6,000 फौजी और 60,000 से ज्यादा शहरी शहीद हुए हैं इस जंग में। हम दहशतगर्दों से, शायद आपसे ज्यादा नफरत करते हैं। हम शायद आपसे ज्यादा चाहते हैं कि उनका किलाकमा हो, उनका खातमा हो। और इसका सबूत खुद हमारे सामने, आप Arlington में चले जाएं, वहां जाके देखें, Captain हुमायू खान और दूसरे शोधा की कब्रें इस बात की गवाही देती हैं कि यहां के रहने वाले मुसलमान अमरीकी हैं, वफादार अमरीकी हैं, काबिल फक्र मुसलमान और काबिल फक्र अमरीकी हैं। Thank you. मैं डावद दित्ता हूं।
Assalamualaikum. Actually, ये जो कुछ भी हुआ, whatever had happened that day, it was just because of Allah wanted us to be there. Allah had made, after 12 years, Allah had made the path and we were chosen to go in front of those and open our hearts. At that day, I didn't say anything, nothing, but I had the pain that I could not explain to anyone. And I'm so thankful to Khuda ya Allah's deen. शुक्र है कि everybody was there to take my pain in their heart. And they really chosen to give me lots of love and respect. And everybody asked me, why after 12 years? It wasn't me or anybody, that was Allah's path. He, Donald Trump, have said about Muslims that they are going to ban Muslims. A reporter found us and called us. What are your ideas on this? You know, my husband has real good ideas to tell them. So then they invited, Hillary Clinton said such a nice thing about Humayun. I was surprised that they have acknowledged all these sacrifice of Muslims. So they invited us there. We never expected to have that much love from America. All Muslims, all Arabs, all, because Humayun have saved 300 Iraqis that day. He wasn't, he was on the gate just to invite, to bring them in the Bakuba camp that he could feed them. They had breakfast together all the time. He will go every day, this was his off day, but still he was on the gate for them. When this happened, he ordered everyone to hit the dirt. It means lay down. And he ran towards the taxi that was coming to kill all those people that why they are friends with America, why they are working for America. And there inside the wall, there was lots of Americans having breakfast too. So there were, we met Americans that were general and colon and they come to us to hold our hand because they are alive today because of Humayun. There was just one casualty that day, just one. Two Iraqi and one Humayun. And everyone was saved. They put the gate's name is on Captain Humayun Khan. On July 28th, there is a whole regiment. They gave the whole regiment 335 lieutenants' name, Captain Humayun Khan Regiment. So I am proud of, I hope everyone listened and from their heart and become a really strong Muslim. Keep your head high because we are no less than any Donald Trump. We are stronger than him. I appreciate your coming. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Assalamualaikum, everybody. Good afternoon. I'm Nahid Chadri. I'm one of the UPNA volunteers. I'm one of the founder members of UPNA as well and one of the past presidents. It is my honor and privilege today to present to you a very renowned and distinguished speaker who has spent most of her life trying to uphold human rights, specifically women rights. She is an amazing visionary. And in a moment, I'll tell you what she thought is going to happen in this world. She is a writer, an international speaker and a human right advocate. She has been accredited by the United Nations Council for Human Rights. She founded the Council for Muslims Facing Tomorrow several years ago. Little did she know that we will definitely need her guidance and activism. She's also the co-founder of Muslim Reform Movement. She's the author of Their Jihad, Not My Jihad. Without further, without much ado, I would like to introduce my very great honor, Rahil Raza. Please welcome Rahil Raza.
Assalamualaikum, everyone. As you can see, they believe in age before beauty, so the seniors go first, but that's okay. I'm absolutely delighted and honored to be here at this most impressive gathering, the largest gathering of Pakistani professionals that I have ever seen in my life. So my talk is directed to those of you who were born here and those of you who may have immigrated here or your parents came here. Because we live in a time when the world is changing very fast. Today, Muslims are one of the fastest growing religious groups in North America. In the past 10 years, the numbers of Muslims have doubled. So in another decade, and I'm sure you know this, one in every five person in North America will be a Muslim. Therefore, questions about the impact of Muslims on Western societies and vice versa, how we are adapting to life in the West and issues about our identity are the subject of various debates, diatribes, books and conferences. And this, by the way, is not a new debate and it's not only specific to the Muslim communities, but every immigrant community has been through this cycle. The question of identity must be discussed with our younger generations because they are the future of this country, they are the future of tomorrow, which is why I've called my organization Muslims Facing Tomorrow, not Back to the Seventh Century. This is part of the larger reform that we see taking place in our midst and signs that Muslims are ready for change. Someone recently said that there are three kinds of Muslims: progressive, regressive and aggressive. I certainly don't want to be included in the third category and I'm sure you don't either. So immigration is changing the landscape of the world. When immigrants move to a new country, there are two things they hold very near and dear to them. One is religion and the other is culture. In some cases, they become more Christian than the Pope or in our case, more women than the Mullah. This is a way of dealing with insecurities in a new land. But you know, a wise person once said that your home is not the country in which you were born. Your home is the country in which you die. So my humble opinion is that whether I'm born in China, Calcutta or Colombia, when I became a citizen of Canada and death overtakes me in Toronto, I will die as a Canadian citizen. Then why is it that some of us still are afraid to call the place where we live, where we educate ourselves, where we work and play, home? Faith is very closely intertwined with culture. When I was growing up in Pakistan, we saw pluralism, art, music, diversity. There was no compulsion in religion, which is the Quranic concept that religion must never be forced. When Pakistan was created, the white portion of the flag, as you know, reflected minorities which were 22% at that time. Today, ladies and gentlemen, it's sad to tell you that the minority population of Pakistan is only 3%. Have we stopped to ask the question why and how many debates and discussions and town hall meetings have we had around this question? Not very much, I'm afraid. In 1977, under the presidency of General Ziaul Haq, along with load shedding in Pakistan, there was a shedding and loss of most of our culture only to try and embrace another culture. This was an identity crisis called the Arabization of Pakistan. The fact is that the heritage of most Pakistanis is not Arab, but South Asian. Many of ancestors came from South Asia originally, but we are in big time denial. Now, both the losses of culture and faith were only due to one cause and that was the beginning of the radicalization of our minds. And what exactly is that, you may ask? What is a radicalization of the mind? Let me share some shocking facts with you to put this into perspective. There was a poll conducted by the Pew Research Center in 2013 titled "The World's Muslims: Religion, Politics and Society." It is the most comprehensive, reliable survey on Muslim attitudes around the world. Now, the conclusion of the poll was exactly what we know. Obviously, that all Muslims are not terrorists. However, there is a serious problem of radical ideology within the Muslim world and I'm going to give you just a few statistics to make the point. An average of 38% of Muslims surveyed who support making Sharia the law of the land, they support the death penalty for leaving Islam and this translates into 237 million people. Do we want to kill people who leave the faith when the Quran tells us there is no compulsion in religion? An average of 52% of Muslims surveyed also support penalties such as whipping or cutting off of hands of thieves. This translated into 281 million people. In the 21st century, don't these practices need reform? And even Islamically, they are the had punishments, the maximum punishments and my Islam is more compassionate than cruel. An average of 14% of Muslims surveyed believes suicide bombing and other forms of violence against civilian targets in defense of Islam can be often justified or sometimes justified and this translated into 119 million people. Among young Western Muslims aged 18 to 29, the percentage who believe that suicide bombings against civilians can be justified are as follows: 42% of French Muslims, 35% of British Muslims and 26% of American Muslims. My purpose of telling you this is that this needs to come as a wake-up call to us. And how did we allow these radical ideas to foster? How did we allow this ideology to grow? By not speaking out against human rights violations when we first saw them take seed in our land of birth. Many of us left our native lands, very cowardly of us, but we left to embrace freedom, democracy, liberty and separation of religion and politics. Because my friends, politics is not religion and religion is not politics. And when the two intertwine, the results are what we see today in theocracies where human rights have been compromised for power, politics and patriarchy. Others who stayed behind succumb to the package. This doesn't mean everyone is wrong, but some of the ideologies that comes on the backs of petrodollars is evil and it allows jihadists not only to control the narrative, but to market it extensively. Our generation has started taking religion too seriously. We don't need to get bogged down by this Islam is in danger syndrome. It's God's message. It will survive and flourish without our interference, thank you. The radical mercenaries out there who entice our young people to go and join them look for people who are unhappy, insecure and have a built-in feeling of anger towards the status quo, towards the country they live in, towards the people they live with, towards the government that runs them. So whatever your grievances, there are peaceful and political ways of dealing with them because violence is never the solution. But how we are going to put this into practice is our ongoing challenge. As an interfaith advocate my entire life, I have learned a lot from other faiths. Judaism is like the grandparent in the Abrahamic faith, wise and learned. They have figured out how to deal with life. Christianity is the parent who has learned to deal with the challenges and reformed itself. Islam is like the troubled teenager, full of testosterone and ready to rebel and angry all the time. It's amazing how many times people ask me that why are we so angry? But it's okay. We are the youngest and we'll come out of this because all faiths have gone through this circle. It's nothing new for us. But only if we use reason and logic. Dogma and rituals on their own are not constructive. We have brought the image of Allah down to a policeman and we follow our faith in fear, whereas it should be through love. We have allowed this to happen. Don't make any mistake. It was not the weather, it was not a conspiracy theory. We have allowed this to happen. Don't let this happen to you and I'm speaking to the youth here today and by the way, anyone younger than me is a youth, so take it with a pinch of salt. Don't let this happen to you because when you are insecure in your identity, your mind and heart become open, pray to an ideology, that is very dangerous. And this is not a gray area, it's black and white. You know what is good and you know what is evil. We need to be proud of who you are. Once you are firm in your identity and faith, no one can influence you. We need to forge an indigenous American identity and I want to share with you very quickly, I know my time is up. But Mr. Galib Iqbal, who just was the ambassador in France and has left there, touted possibly to be your next ambassador for Pakistan or the Foreign Secretary. He just came to Toronto last week. And he had started this terminology. He said, no hyphens, no Canadian Pakistanis. He said, at the most, call yourself Canadians of Pakistani heritage. And a wonderful idea, Americans of Pakistani heritage, but no need to have any hyphens. Once again, this is an Islamic concept, to follow the laws of the land where you live unless you're forced to do something against your faith. We need to take responsibility for our actions. We individually, not to fall prey to the victim ideology in which everything that happens is someone else's fault. This is a cop-out and it's an easy deflection. It is the idea that everything is a conspiracy theory. We have done nothing wrong. It's time to look inwards. But when we travel from one country to another, how much excess baggage are we allowed to carry? Obviously, not too much. So we need to let go of some of that excess cultural baggage and we need to learn. Issues of assimilation and accommodation, identity and loyalty, citizenship in civil society, religious freedom and its limitations should be discussed openly and honestly and with no political correctness. And obviously, you know by now that I am not politically correct. Our youth are the future of tomorrow and we should encourage them to embrace critical thinking. And I'm going to end with the words of a great critical thinker and philosopher of my time, maybe you remember, Alama Iqbal, who actually in his shikwa and jawab, his shikwa complained to God about the fact that there is so much diversity around us. We are living with Hindus and Sikhs and Jews and Saudis and Christians. Yet who picked up the first sword, he asks in his shikwa. And the jawab is something we must all listen to. The English is, your prosperity as a community is your decline. Your prophet is one and your religion and your faith is one. The Kaaba is one, Allah and the Quran. Is it too much to ask that Muslims be one? Here you see factions and there you see castes. In times like these, is this the way of progress? Munafat ek hai aur qon ki nuksan bhi ek. Ek hi sabka nabi, din bhi, iman bhi ek. Har me paak bhi, Allah bhi, Quran bhi ek. Kuchh badi baat thi jo hoti musulman bhi ek. Firqa bandi hai kahin aur kahin zate hai. Kyaa zaman-e-ma'apne ki ye baate hain? And I thank you.
Thank you very much for such a nice presentation. And I'm sure you are not, you're not, of course, the same age as Alama Iqbal. That would make you much older than you are. But thank you again. And you want to say something? Let me read this brief note that Vajahat sent about himself. I asked him to introduce himself and he said that Vajahat Ali is not a doctor, but he's married to one. And he said he is a recovering attorney. I thought it is the client who recovers after seeing an attorney. And then he says, he's a playwright. Well, attorneys do play with words. And a writer. Writers are, playwrights are writers too. And then the most interesting part comes now. He said that he currently co-owns two Pakistani-American babies. Now, I wonder how would, how would the babies react to being co-owned or owned by their parents? In America, I do not really... In America, I do not really own anyone. Thank you. Please introduce him.
Salam alaikum, everyone. So just to formally introduce, in case everyone doesn't know Wajahat Ali, he's basically like an unofficial rock star for the new generation of Muslims. You've no doubt read some of his articles. He's worked as a journalist and a writer for the Washington Post, The Guardian, Al Jazeera. And he's, like, as Wajahat said, that he's a recovering lawyer. But he's also change agent, and he works as part of the Generation Change Program, which is a leadership program started by the US State Department. So, pretty awesome stuff. And so, one last thing, just with all his accolades and talent and everything, he's a testament that not every Pakistani has to be a doctor. So, please welcome Wajahat Ali.
If I wasn't married, that'd be an amazing rishtha, biodata. You would get me married off in like thirty seconds at Ebbna. Thank you very much. My ego is inflated. I feel very good right now. I'm not a doctor. Who here is not a doctor? Bitcha are, I'm sorry, all the doctors. Our maham is the lowest here. They put us all in one room. Who is a doctor here? Sorry that you have to tolerate our petty existence. Please take, you know, have some faith in us. Inshallah, one day we'll get to your maham, maybe. I married a doctor, so I was smart. Did you guys who are non-doctors marry doctors? Or fellow failures? Fellow failures? Okay, it's fine. Allah is merciful, maybe. Maybe you might get an agenda, probably not. Look, we're talking about Islamophobia and Muslims and all this fun stuff. This entire is about Muslims. If anyone has, who saw the Republican debates or the Democratic debates or the DNC, RNC? Okay. Every time, if you played a drinking game, and I don't drink, but if you do, it's okay, I'm not judging. God is judging and watching. If you took a shot of whiskey each time a candidate talked about Islam or radical Islam or Muslims, you'd be dead of alcohol poisoning within five minutes. If you were a Pakistani uncle like me and drank chai or mango lessie and played the same drinking game, you would go into a diabetic coma. It is a fun time. I'm like, this is amazing. This is the best drinking game of all time. We're radical Muslims, we're violent extremists, we're peaceful, we're patriotic. Everyone's talking about us. We're so popular that an orange, thin-skinned man with interesting wavy hair, you might have heard of him, Donald J. Trump, has proposed banning 1.6 billion of us from entering the country. Temporarily. Temporarily though, Masha Allah, only temporarily. Also, as of last week, he doubled down and said that for the Muslims who are here, that's you guys, most of you guys, in order to make sure that we're safe, he's going to do extreme vetting of Muslims. No one asks them what this looks like, so I wanted to offer some suggestions. There's doctors here, he can check if we're circumcised. But then the Jews are also circumcised, so I could be Jewish. He could check by my skin color, but I'm caramel moka, and so are a lot of Indian Hindus, right? Maybe he can dangle biryani in front of us, and if we start drooling. But that's, again, the entire population of New York. So how do you vet a safe American Muslim? No one knows. Then there was Dr. Ben Carson, I mentioned for the doctors, who, and I did this for my son, like, you know, now he's two, about six months ago, in order to put him to Ben Carson interviews. And he used to fall asleep, just like in two minutes. Ben Carson said that Muslims in America follow something called Sharia. And this is not religious law, but a totalitarian ideology, which forces Muslims to do something called takia. Now, be honest with me, who here has heard of the word takia? Two nerds in the middle. Okay, three. When I first heard of takia, I thought it was a new taco released by Taco Bell with like masala and guac. Takia sounds delicious. It sounds amazing. I've gone to Muslim-majority countries, I've gone to Pakistan, Malaysia, Indonesia. I've traveled a lot the past two years. I swear to you, I've gone to Muslim-majority countries, I've asked packed audiences, what is takia? No one knows. What takia actually is, for those of you who don't know, is in the old-school times and medieval times, and still some minority groups do this to protect themselves, specifically Shia, it allowed you to conceal your faith if you outing yourself as Muslim would get you killed. Also, takia allowed Muslims to protect Jews and Christians during the time of the Inquisition. For those of you who remember, 1492, not a good time for anyone who was Muslim or Jewish in Spain. Jews went and lived with Muslims, they went to North Africa. So Muslims were commanded, you can allow, you're allowed to lie and say, "Oh, no, no, this is my Muslim cousin visiting," to protect their lives. Okay, you guys with me so far? It's also a very similar concept in Judaism, that you're allowed to do takia to protect your life. What they have specifically said in the past four to five years, and I'll explain how this got mainstreamed, is takia is religiously mandated lying. That if you're a Muslim and a practicing Muslim, God commands you to religiously lie. Lie about what? Anyone want to take a guess? Your secret Muslim agenda. What is your secret Muslim agenda? Anyone want to take a guess? Sharia? Who said that? This is a hip, hip auntie. Sharia, exactly. Our secret agenda is that we are going to implement Sharia in the United States of America and replace the Constitution with the military political, military legal political doctrine known as Sharia, Islamic supremacy. So even the good Muslim, right? This is very important. You can never be too sure about the good Muslim, the safe Muslim, the happy Muslim, the doctor-uncle Muslim. The doctor-uncle Muslim who lives in the suburbs with the Mercedes. The doctor-uncle Muslim who saved you with a heart transplant, living in the suburbs with the auntie who wears the amazing Saudis. You can't even trust them, because you know what? Muslims, their secret agenda is to implement Sharia. And you never know. And you can never be too sure. And you can never be too safe. It's not a joke. Ben Carson was running for president. And we're so popular right now, I kid, that, Masha Allah, people forget that we have elected a Muslim president twice, Barack Hussein Obama. Round of applause. Can we say takbir? Takbir, Allahu Akbar. There's always a takbir uncle. Where is the takbir uncle? Who is, this is a safe space. Don't be afraid of her auntie, she won't hurt you. Safe space. Who's the takbir uncle who always says, "Nare ali, yaali?" There's always one uncle. Anyone here? No one? Everyone, okay. Ready? Three, two, one. Takbir, Allahu Akbar. Thank you. Nare salat, ya Rasulallah. That's the uncle right there, by the way. We found him. If you want to know the uncle, he's there. Be watch, watch him the entire day. I'm kidding. In all seriousness, brother Barack Hussein Obama is not a Muslim. But in a September CNN poll, this is just a couple of months ago, twenty-nine percent of registered independent voters think Barack Hussein Obama is a Muslim. Forty percent of registered Republican voters think he's a Muslim. And fifty-four percent of Khalif Trump supporters think he's a Muslim. A recent study came out that said most of the people who support Trump think that Barack Hussein Obama is a Muslim. And because they think he is a Muslim, they think he is somehow fundamentally anti-American, Western, foreign, or a threat. It's fascinating. And if you really think about the statistics and the numbers, that means some people voted for Barack Hussein Obama thinking he was a Muslim, which is kind of awesome, if you think about it. We live in strange, interesting times. What a world we live in, right? I was born in Fremont, San Antonio, California in 1980, to Pakistani immigrant parents who thought it would be hilarious to name their only child Wajahat, to fit in. A very common name. And my parents also thought it would be hilarious not to teach me English until I went to preschool. It was an interesting time. I was also, and I'm also left-handed. Anyone here left-handed? So we're the gins of our entire community, yeah? All the aunties to this, my popo to this day, I'm a grown man with children. She goes, "Mmm, us haat ke saath hum kuchh aur cheez karte hain." And I'm like, wow. I'm like, wow. And I'm like, you know, because, you know, we can't help it, people. Doctors, you failed us, Pakistan. Tell the community, God made us this way. I just, you know, they trained me to eat with my right hand, to be very Muslim. I just take sometimes the biryani with my left hand. My popo, out of nowhere, just pops out, "Mmm, us haat ke saath kuchh aur karte hain." Thirty-five years old, Masha Allah, it still happens. And, you know, even though I grew up as the token Muslim, I was often the only Muslim, the only Pakistani kid, the only, Masha Allah, healthy kid. I was healthy, which all Pakistani uncles know it means fat. Left-handed, sick. The worst thing I was called growing up was Gandhi, which is actually a compliment. You know, a pacifist leader who helped unite with other people to overthrow three hundred years of imperialism and create two nation-states. I'm like, thank you for giving me a compliment. But in today's age, in 2016, the reality is that Muslim kids are being bullied in school like never before. We have over fifty nationwide protests against mosques after 2010, when there was a manufactured controversy about the Ground Zero mosque controversy in New York. You guys remember that? Which was neither at Ground Zero nor a mosque. And now there are nationwide protests against mosques and communities that have lived and breathed and thrived in America for the past thirty, forty, fifty years. I talked about the Sharia threat, which everyone laughed at. It has been introduced in three dozen states, passed in about ten. Nearly every single Republican presidential candidate in 2012, except Mitt Romney, ran with the Sharia threat to get money and votes. In 2016, it is a part of the platform of Donald J. Trump, all right? Donald J. Trump has doubled down and made the anti-Muslim hysteria part and parcel of his campaign. His first ad that came out a couple of months ago, if you guys saw it, you can see on YouTube, was thirty seconds long. What did he lead with? Anyone remember? "We're going to temporarily ban 1.6 billion Muslims." And then he coupled it with what? "We're also going to build a wall." So, Masha Allah, if you're Muslim and Mexican, sucks to be you right now. Yet, we look at the reality of American Muslims, and the reality according to all the statistics, the facts, the reports is the following, okay? American Muslims are, for the most part, moderate. I don't know what that means, it's a good word. They're mainstream, I don't know what that means, but it's a good word. Highly educated. In fact, Muslim-American women are the most religious, excuse me, are the most educated women of any minority group, just behind Jewish-American women. Give yourselves a round of applause. It's a big deal. As a group, even though there are problems, there are pockets of American Muslim communities who are still struggling, we have above-average income, okay? We reject violent extremism, reject ISIS, reject Al Qaeda, reject Osama bin Laden. In fact, American Muslims, more than any other religious community, reject the use of violence against civilians, more so than Jewish-American communities and evangelical Christians, all right? Muslim-Americans have been responsible for thwarting forty percent of terrorist plots since 9/11 by proactively working with law enforcement. A lot of people don't know this. So, so far, so good, right? Everyone's feeling good? But we're talking about Islam and Muslims, so it's always bad news. The reality right now is that Islam has a lower favorability rating now than the weeks following the 9/11 terror attacks. Let that sink in for a moment, all right? There are five times as many hate crimes against Muslims in America than there were before 9/11. Nationwide protests against mosques. Like I talked about, our kids are being bullied. So much so, it's an interesting reality. I just had a kid. Many people from my generation, we never had this conversation, but we have dark humor now. They're like, "We should name our kid something which, you know, kind of is Muslimi and Pakistani, but like is very safe. How about Adam? You can make that into Adam. Or Rayyan becomes Ryan." And if you're a parent, who here is a parent? At the end of the day, you want to protect your kids. But the fact that we're even having this conversation shows us how this is infecting the psyche of not only our generation, but also our kids. I've had kids come up, and parents tell me that our kids are like, "Hey, mom, if Trump wins, we might go into camps, ha, ha, ha." And the mom's like, "La haula wa la khoda." Don't joke about that. So even the kids are absorbing this. And so, very quickly, how did this happen? Everyone asks me, "Wajahat, how did this happen?" I did research for a think tank in DC, Center for American Progress. A lot of people call it like Obama's think tank, the Democratic think tank. We did a six-month investigative research, came out four years ago, called Fear Incorporated: The Roots of the Islamophobia Network in America. Because we were very curious how these hysterical, crazy memes, Sharia is a threat to America, Obama is a Muslim, every single Muslim organization has been infiltrated by the radical Muslim Brotherhood, apparently even UPNA, right? Where do these once-fringe memes become mainstream talking points for presidential candidates? Very quickly, I did six-month research, and what we found out is that there is a small cottage industry, very incestuous, comprising of funders, always count on the money, think tanks, grassroots organizations, certain politicians, and certain media outlets that work together, especially for the past ten years, and have helped mainstream once-fringe anti-Muslim rhetoric into mainstream talking points. Also, thanks to ISIS, Al Qaeda, and radicalized violent plots, we know I was in the media. If it bleeds, it leads. Sensationalism runs the day. You compound all that together with deep mistrust and fear of Barack Hussein Obama because people think he's a Muslim, all right? Coinciding with elections 2010, 2012, and 2016, and what you get is this cocktail of fear, anger, hysteria, and ignorance that is being used deliberately by certain people to, A, promote anti-Muslim ideologies, or for some people, like Donald Trump, I don't think he believes what he says, to get elected. But either way, the consequences are borne by minority communities. So it's not just Muslims, and this is very important. See, a lot of Pakistanis are like, "Yaar, main whiskey shiski pitaun, namaz hi nahi ho, ye fandoz, ye sab ye fando Muslimaan hai, thik hai? Marne do, unko marne aaya." I'm just being real, let's do real talk. I'm not that religious type, doesn't matter. Because you look Muslimi. This is why it affects all of us. It's an American problem. The number-one hate crimes of Islamophobia aren't against Muslims. They're against who? Anyone want to take a guess? Sikh. First hate crime after 9/11, Balbir Singh, gas station owner in Arizona was shot and killed by white folks because they said they're the ones who brought down the two towers. Bichara Sikh guy. Persian Jews, Arab Christians, Indian Hindus, Pakistani secularists, religious folks, maybe white hipsters with beards, okay? It's an American problem. This is my sign to leave? I'm almost done in two minutes.
You have two minutes.
Okay, two minutes is perfect. So, the question then becomes, what do we do, right? What do we do? Because we can sit here and cry and be depressed, and I could be like every other Pakistani uncle I met in my life, and drink chai and yell at Bill O'Reilly on Fox News, which is perfectly fine, I'm not judging. I am judging. But what we can do is the following, and I'll give you an example because she was here. I didn't know if she was here, but Ghazal Khan and Khizar Khan, I'll give you an excellent example. "I believe we have to have positivity and hope even in the darkest of days." There's a great hadith, a saying of the Prophet Muhammad Sallallahu Alaihi Wasallam, which says the following, "Even if you see Armageddon coming around the corner, plant a seed." I'll say that again. "Even you see Armageddon coming around the corner, yom l'chaimath, plant a seed." Okay? And even though one of the four horsemen of the apocalypse looks like Donald Trump, and the other one looks like ISIS, and it might seem that everything's going to hell, our faith commands us to be hopeful and do good and invest and do righteous deeds. When you saw Ghazal Khan and Khizar Khan, why, I tell people is the following. Isn't it amazing, brown, karmic justice and irony that two Muslim Pakistani immigrants with accented English and multi-syllable names and caramel moka skin and auntie with a dupatta are body slamming Donald J. Trump left and right? This is like, this is like, someone's talking to me, I'm like, if Allah has a sense of humor, this is it. Republicans bring down Donald Trump. McCain couldn't bring him down, you know, Meg Whitman can't bring him down. Obama can't bring him down. Auntie and Uncle Khan are bringing down Donald J. Trump. And why? Because they're appealing to Americans' values. They're appealing to Americans' goodness. They're appealing to the Constitution. Khizar Khan, just let this sink in. Pakistani Muslim uncle is single-handedly responsible for making the US Constitution a bestseller in America the past week. Isn't that amazing? And so, very quickly, and I'll say this, I'll give more details. Even though I've given you so much negativity in the past fifteen years since 9/11, mosques have doubled in America. People are investing in this country, and they're not going anywhere. Ms. Marvel is a Muslim Pakistani-American superheroine who is part of The Avengers, a bestselling comic book series. We have two Muslim congressmen elected after 9/11. We have Muslim judges. We have Khizar Khan and Ghazal Khan. Yes, the Republicans are mocking him, but the entire world is also embracing them. And they're American, and they're Pakistani, and they're Muslim. We need more writers. We need more politicians. We need more civic engagement. We need people to invest in the American project. All right? In the evolving rough draft of the American narrative, do you want to be a stereotype? Do you want to be a footnote? Do you want to be forgotten? I'm asking you a question. Do you want to be the global antagonist? So when your son grows up, they see Muslim and Pakistani, and they think Taliban? No. I do not wanna teach my son that my legacy for him is that he's a victim. Mashallah, you're a great victim, Ibrahim. You suffer very well. You make a lot of money, and you buy really nice cars, and you live in the suburbs, and you can't do anything. They'll always hate you, because you're brown, and you're Muslim. So just drink chai and do nothing. I want him to say, Ibrahim, you can throw down and be the first Muslim president. And people will embrace you, if you're a good man. And so, have faith in America, have faith in your community, have faith in Pakistanis, have faith in Muslims, have faith in the goodness of people. The two major core reasons of Islamophobia, and I promise I'm finishing, is the following. Ignorance? We'll finish. 62% of Americans say they don't know a Muslim. Let that sink in, we've been in this country for 500 years. 62% of Americans say they don't know a Muslim. And what they know about Islam and Muslims, people say they get from the media and from stereotypes. So if you aren't writing your story, your story is always being written for you by others. It's time to pick up the pen and become the roomies of America. Right? To become the Allah-ma'ibals of America. Inshallah, in 10 years from now, I don't wanna hear, I actually do wanna hear the poetry of Allah-ma'ibal, because it's always good. But I wanna hear someone say, "Let me tell you the beautiful, inspiring verse of a poet born and raised in America, who happens to be Pakistani and Muslim." And we have to invest in that future. Thank you.
Vajahat, that was amazing and hysterical at the same time. That was great. We, we hope you enjoyed it. Next speaker is Amal Khan. And Amal, you have big shoes to fill. And I know you'll do it fine. Amal Khan is a budding journalist, a Daniel Pearl fellow, who has been residing in Los Angeles and is working presently for the LA Times. Amal has a terrific background. She is an undergraduate from Smith College in Massachusetts with a BA in Government Studies, and a master's in International Relations from the University of Warwick in England. Amal has been working on a manuscript for the last three years, and she's still at it. It's going to be something great, I'm sure. She worked in the Nation newspaper, which is an English daily from Lahore, as editor of the op-ed pages. Now she writes and edits features in The Nation. So I think Amal's engagement in the US is for a year, is it? The Daniel Pearl? Six months. So we are lucky to have her. So here is Amal Khan.
Yeah, I'm not gonna lie, I feel a little bit set up right now. I have to follow up that act. Sexism, of course. So I was actually asked to come here and speak about the Pakistani media and what we're doing in Pakistan to counter radical ideology. And it's a very complicated, problematic issue. But before I delve into that, I just want to tell you guys that I've been in the States now for six months, and I've been in LA, and I've been around three different newsrooms. And I'm sad to say that I haven't met a single Muslim journalist at all, in any of these newsrooms. And I would like to tell, I was just like, you guys need to encourage your children, get away from medicine a little bit, like, "Achirishte nahi aenge, but it's okay," you know? Become journalists, write, speak. Giving your children that kind of confidence goes a long way, I think. And we need you more than ever, in this country and in others. So, in Pakistan, the debates around radical ideology are a little bit different. America doesn't really have a Muslim radicalization problem. It might have a Muslim assimilation problem. But in Pakistan, the radical problem is real. It's a real threat, it's a real problem that we deal with, editorial decisions that we have to make every single day. We have a broken education system, which means that the madrasah system fills a vacuum. We have a broken economy, we have a weak government, we have a refugee crisis. I mean, it's bad. And I don't need to spell that out for anybody. And what we have is that we have these radical clerics and radical views that are being shouted from the pulpits of mosques at every corner, every jama. So, our job there is a different kind of fight. It's a less ideological, more literal kind of fight. And we've seen already, unfortunately, how much editorial oversight has cost us. We lose lives, we lose journalists, we lose minorities. People die if you make a wrong editorial choice at any given time. We've had clowns like Amir Lyakat. Is anyone here familiar with him? If that's watching. Yeah, the fact that that man is still allowed, what is wrong with him? It's an excellent question. So we, we have clowns like Amir Lyakat on prime time, several of them, on prime time television, and they're being given that kind of airtime. And it's happened twice on his show that he's had controversial speakers who've come up and said this or that about blasphemy, and emities have died as a direct result of that. And no action has been taken, apart from, you know, a few days of suspension. So, the threats that we face with radical ideology and the role that the media has to play back home is direct, it's literal, and it's real. The balance back home is so fragile, as you guys already obviously know, that one bad statement on TV is sometimes all that it takes to end somebody's life. So, with that responsibility, walking into a newsroom every day, it does kind of feel like we're part of a mission. And I'm, I'm a little bit proud of that. I'm a little bit proud of young journalists, this new crop of young journalists that's coming up, that's taking these tough stances against the intelligence institutions. And we really are, and it's hard, you know, because... I'm proud of my colleagues, I'm proud of young women and men who are coming up there. And we, we're taking stances against intelligence institutions, against political parties, against organizations. You know, we will very often receive advice, but it's actually just a threat. You know, we're threatened with incarceration. Our colleagues are beaten, they're taken off the streets, they're kidnapped, they're killed. You know, it's, it's all very, it's all very real back there. And despite all the odds, I'm proud to say that the journalism community, especially the young journalists, are really taking a stand, and they're proud of it. All of us walk in... We walk into our newsrooms knowing that we have a real job to do. And sometimes it requires fighting with our colleagues, and fighting and lying to our parents, which I often have to do to, to go on assignment. But, you know, it's, it's part of the job, and we really do feel that it's an important job to do. And it also, by the way, makes us really unpopular. So that's another side of it. Just a logistic point about the legalities of, sort of, the legal landscape back home right now. So after the 2014 Peshawar school attack, a very problematic law came into existence. It's called the Protection of Pakistan Act. You guys have heard of it? So it's, it's really bloody complicated, and it's problematic, it's vague, which means that it gives vast power to the government to do whatever they want in the name of counterterrorism. You guys obviously know about the Patriot Act, so it's, you could kind of compare it. So what it did was, that it brought the media into its fold, and it actually uses us as a counterterrorism tool. Unfortunately, what it has led to is a complete blackout of Islamist activities. And that's a slippery, slippery slope. Because if you don't cover anything that they're doing, then you're, in essence, not covering all the things that the government is not doing to fix it. Right? So, at this time legally, we can't, we simply can't cover any Islamist activity. Even though I feel personally that it is a threat to a democracy and to a free media that we've struggled for many years for. There are good sides, of course. For example, Mu'mtaz Qadr, the man who assassinated Governor Salman Taseer. His funeral had 100,000 people show up, 100,000 people. Not a peep from any of the TV channels, 40 news channels. Nobody covered it. Two days ago, the Home Secretary, the Indian Home Secretary was, was visiting, and Jamathul Dawa, who's half his saeed, a man with a $10 million bounty on his head, who roams freely in Pakistan, by the way, organized nationwide protests against the Home Secretary's visit. And again, thousands and thousands of people are out in the streets, nothing, complete blackout. It's a very, very thin line that we're walking here. In a way, it's good, and one can appreciate it for the interests of public order. But on the other hand, it just goes to show that there is a massive amount of government and state failure. Why are these things continuing to happen? We need to ask ourselves that question back home. And we are. It's, it's very tricky, where do you draw the line with this kind of censorship? How much do you edit? When do you stop? When is it too much? When are you censoring? You know, when, when are you overdoing it? These are all important editorial questions that we ask ourselves daily. You know, I, I don't wanna take too much, too much of your time. I feel like this is, this should open up to questions now. I just want to tell you, you know, very briefly, we hear a lot of, we hear a lot about negatives that come out of Pakistan. And it's true, it's all there. I know it, I cover it every single day. But there's also a lot of good, and there's also a lot of humanity. And Pakistan is a country of contradictions. It all kind of exists together. And it's wonderful, and it's hilarious, and it's tragic, and it's brutal, and it's all those things all at once. I remember, one week, a few months ago, I covered an honor killing. A man who had burnt his daughter alive for, for marrying a man of her choice. And the same day, I did a story on the Pakistan women's cricket team. And when I was interviewing them, this isn't something that I knew going into it. When I interviewed them, I realized that all of them, all these women who play international cricket in their Pakistan team kits, most of them coming from extreme poverty. All of them, since childhood, were supported by their fathers. So, there are good fathers, and there are bad fathers, and there are good people, and there are bad people, and there are great stories, and there are brutal stories, and all of them are coming out of a beloved country. But that doesn't mean that there's no hope. I have so much hope as a young person and as a young journalist going into this. I have, in some ways, the best job in the world. I have the great privilege of sitting with these people and being intimate with them, and being humbled by them. And despite the odds, I'm so proud of our country and the fact that our people come out of it with so much courage, and laughter, and wit. The humor is still alive. And I think all of us should take personal pride in the fact that the humanity and the courage of ordinary Pakistanis has always survived. And, thank you. Thank you all for being here, and, yeah, I, thank you.
Well, thank you. Thank you very much, Amal. And I got in touch with, we got in touch with Amal because she and I, we did the same fellowship. Actually, I probably was the first Pakistani to do this many, many years ago. I think Emperor Akbar was still ruling India when I came here. So, and I wanted to point out something that, you know, the advantage of being an American is that you get away with calling taqaya, which means hiding your identity, calling it a takya, which is a pillow. But he did, and he got away with it. I would not if I said that. And his comments on circumcision reminded me of a piece I read in, in the British media about Pakistan's Islamic bomb. And I wrote a counter piece, and I, and they were gracious enough to publish it, in which I asked them that how did they know it was an Islamic bomb? Did they check it to make sure that it was properly circumcised or not? I, I just, this is a little piece, it's a little more serious. This is something I've always felt very strongly about. What I lost as a person, as a Muslim, in this fight against, or in the way the extremists have overtaken my faith. And I feel that in this whole thing, I have lost my God, the God that I grew up believing in. So I just want to read that piece to you. "We were in our backyard, God and me, when they came. They took Him away and changed Him. He was a friendly God before. We roamed around together, holding hands. We collected colored feathers, glorious flowers, and chased delicate butterflies. And when we talked, we spent hours in friendly chats. When they came, we were having an important friendly talk. He was explaining why butterflies stain our hands, and fireflies do not burn them. They were all big men, some bearded, some not. Some had guns, some did not. Some carried swords and spears, others hefted heavy sticks. They came and shouted. 'We cannot let God waste His time. We are here to save Him from children and butterflies. He is too important for childish thoughts. He has more important things to do. Give Him to us.' They lifted God on their shoulders and marched from my garden chanting slogans. And they took Him away from me and my house, from my village and my city. From that day on, nobody has seen God. Nobody knows where He is, where they took Him. He does not talk to children anymore, He does not talk to us at all. They bring all His orders to us and say, 'This is what God says. Do it. Those who do not are kicked, beaten, flogged, and even beheaded. All in the name of My God. He has changed so much since they took Him, that I do not recognize Him anymore. He is not the God I loved, He is their God. He no longer speaks the language of butterflies and fireflies. His orders are that of a loving, His orders are not that of a loving friend. He talks like earthbound rulers. I still miss Him, miss Him a lot. I want the God of butterflies and flowers. I want to say to Him, 'Oh God, how much I want You to come down from Your heavenly abode and play with me. I want to be a little child again. I want to hold Your hand and run with You deep into the jungle. And when the jungle scares me, I want to hide in, hide in Your arms. I want You to stay there, wait for Me. Do not abandon Me like others. You are more kind than a mother, and more daring than a father. I want You to leave all Your work aside for one day, just one day. Yes, I know it is important. I know it is You who brings clouds from the sea and makes them rain on the thirsty earth, so that we could, so that we could smell the mist and the raindrops stir in the dry soil. It is You who brings the monsoon, holding the rains of the sun, the moon, the stars, and the planets in Your hands, and change the seasons for Your children. It is You who prevents people from killing each other. You yearn for us to live under the loving care of our friends. It is You who feeds insects hiding under the stone and give warmth to the poor sitting around the fire. You also fetch a glass of water for the beggar woman. You fill our dreams with color and light, and bring sleep to our burning eyes. You protect the travelers and save us from our own madness. Yes, You have so many important things to do, but You have always done this and more. Only You know how old this universe is, and how unending Your daily chores are. But You also know that My stay here is short. My age is not numbered in solar years. I want to hold Your hands and walk in the cruel crowd, holding My head high, so that everybody could see You have doctored Your bearded guardians and returned to children and butterflies. I want to watch Him, I want to watch them, and smile at them. And You, My Provider, I don't want much from You. Just buy me a plate of chickpeas, some oranges, and some mangoes. I know they do not grow in the same season, but You can get, get both for Me. I also want You to fetch a glass of cold sherbet with crushed ice, and let Me put My head on Your shoulders. Don't be upset with Me, this is how children behave. And sleep, a long, long sleep. And when I do, You quietly close My eyes and take Me to the journey that awaits us all, if You are with Me. Why should I be afraid of anyone? Thank you." Now, we start the Q and A. And as Homera said earlier, take less than a minute, please, because there are many people and many questions. And please, no comments. Yes, just ask what you want to, and let the other person take it. And of course, you will have to queue up here to raise those questions. So, first, and please, tell us also, who do you want to answer? Please do introduce it.
My name is Gazala Kazee. I was there when the Taseer's murderer was hanged. I read the local newspapers, actually. I couldn't see anything in the, in the local Urdu media newspapers. They had everything actually published, in, in very small newspapers. I think that Amir Lyakat Ali is there because he is very popular. And whoever is popular media will pick it, this is an ideological war. This is not just, you know, a small thing, that's what I think. And Urdu media is also very important, that's what I...
No, yeah, I agree with you, but you see, these people are also running a business. And I have to say that I've seen personally that business is now taking the backseat, where the interests...